Councillor Olson is excused, councillor Bridge, Bender, Merzick, McDonald, Hendry, Finsland, Herrick, McKenzie, Dahlbeck, and Seather.
As a prelude, I will say that I'm going to retain my right to vote at this meeting.
Item number four is approval of the February 1st regular council meeting minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Item six is a consent agenda.
Motion's been approved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any items we wish to have withheld from there? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 7.1, planning director Cirque is requesting to award the contract for the Fraser Shipyard Dock while rehabilitation project to the lowest, most qualified bidder, lend a construction for $2,315,140.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comment or questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is passed.
7.2, planning director Cirque is recommending the establishment of a subcommittee for the development of the 2011 through 2015 consolidated plan for the community development block grant program.
Motion to approve. And a second? Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
7.3, assistant public works director Getzmann is submitting the renewal for the WLSSD landfill contract and has a presentation for you tonight.
Well, good evening councillors, you have a request tonight in front of you. We're seeking authorization to continue the contract the city currently has with the WLSSD to our fur disposal of municipal solid waste at Mox and Mike landfill. And we've got a short presentation here that will discuss the ins and outs of that proposal and we'll get started. The purpose of our presentation tonight is to update the city council on the proposed contract extension that would run from July of 2011 this year for an eight-year period through the end of June in 2019, to discuss the positioning of the landfill for operations after the year of 2019, and then to answer any questions you might have regarding the proposed contract extension. The landfill operates under a plan of operation that is called, it's the first bullet point you see, the Mox and Mike sanitary landfill, horizontal and vertical plan of operation that is dated May of 1999. And that is a plan that is approved by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and it governs all the operation of the landfill. It basically contains the approvals for the space that we have permitted to construct landfill cells, the monitoring requirements, all of those kind of things. And the last bullet point you see there, we do have permitted space right now through the completion of cell number five, which if you recall, we're under construction on the north half of that cell at the present time. The purpose of having the Mox and Mike landfill for the city, it provides low-cost refuse collection and disposal for the residents of Superior and commercial, small commercial premises in the city of Superior. And we've got some cost comparisons here and with that I'll turn it over to Jean Vito.
Thanks Jeff, good evening everyone. As Jeff just mentioned, we do feel it is important to offer this service at the lowest cost possible to our residents. And I think this slide does a good job of explaining or doing a little comparison of what would be a typical charge for this across the bridge for trash pickup, disposal, and recycling versus what our residents are paying here in Superior. And there's a couple main reasons for the large difference here. First and foremost, the city of Superior owns its own landfill. And we also have, the contract that's before you tonight, it provides a lot of funding for our landfill enterprise fund. So what I've got here is that where we derive the estimate at just over $7 per month for residents for this service is because we know that we don't send out monthly bills for this service for any of our residents, but how it's paid for is when people pay their taxes in January. And we have a city levy that's roughly $11.5 million. Of that levy, we take for the year 2011, we're taking $845,000 and transferring that over to help fund the landfill fund. But again, the bulk of that funding is coming from other sources. And that leads me into talking about the importance of the contract that you have before you tonight. When we met six months ago, seven months ago in June, and we asked the council to get their blessing to go forward and attempt to negotiate another contract, we showed you one of the slides here that really gives you a picture, a visual picture of what happens to our landfill fund when we have a contract and when we don't have a contract. And you can see we started out, our first contract started in 1994, and you can see how we were in a large deficit position there financially. And each year of that five or six-year, five-year contract, we built up our reserves. We didn't have a contract from the period 1999 until 2006. And you can obviously see what happens when we don't have that source of revenue coming into our landfill. We're currently under the contract that started in 2006 and it goes through June of 2011. Okay. So when we did get the blessing from the council to go forward and do our negotiations, there were a number of areas that we needed to make sure we were keeping an eye on. First and foremost, we want to enter into a contract that is financially beneficial for the city and that if we were looking at a five-year or an eight-year contract with the district, we would want to make sure that every year of that contract and after that contract, we were in a good financial position in the landfill. And also when, during the periods of time when we have the contract with the district, we are taking in about 100,000 tons of waste every year versus when we don't have the contract, we've taken maybe 10,000 tons from our residents and then we have other haulers that bring in waste from businesses. So our capital costs do rise substantially when we have a lot of waste coming into our landfill and we don't have money on hand to do the construction costs that are needed to make sure we have proper space to take care of that contract. So we've done a lot of analysis on the remaining airspace that we have in our landfill at this time. And then also we've done projections of if we're having 100,000 tons coming in, where would we be at the, not only at the end of the eight years, but during the contract period as well? What we're finding right now is that at the end of the current contract that we have, we're really cutting it close as far as having remaining space to carry out that contract. And of course, we don't want to leave ourselves in a position where the end of the contract comes and we don't have any space left in our landfill for our residents. So all those items are definitely taken into consideration as we think about our contract. Another item, and I'll talk about this later on a different slide, the landfill fund, as I mentioned earlier, it does get some funding from our general fund, the levy that gets transferred over. That amount was $845,000, but that doesn't mean that that's the cost to run our landfill. Our actual costs are closer to, they can range anywhere from $2.5 million to $4 million per year, depending upon whether we have that contract or not. So this puts us in somewhat of a position of being a bit reliant on having that contract with the district because if we didn't have it, we still have at least $2.5 million of costs and we would need to figure out how we would fund that. So this slide here, the top line, the light blue bar, this shows estimates of what our, what we believe our operating costs will be if we were to get an eight-year contract extension, which would go halfway through 2019, and then it assumes that we don't have that contract after that. The lower, the purple bar, that represents the amount of funding that our general fund transfers to cover these costs in the year 2011. And this is something that I would just like the council to be aware of. And it's perhaps something that when we have a new mayor and we might have new faces on the council, but I think it's something that we'll need to look at so perhaps we can get ourselves into a better position eight or nine years down the road where we might not be as dependent on this contract as we are. And at that point, whoever is mayor or city council, it puts you in a better position to say, do we want to continue on with the contract or do we not want to? So the recommendation that we have tonight is we are asking the council to approve an eight-year contract extension with the district that would go through June 30th of 2019. And at some point in the future, look at the funding from the general fund and trying to make sure that that becomes a little more sufficient for funding our landfill. And with that, I would open it up for any questions.
Don't see any lights. Oh, there we are, councillor Merzick.
I understand the need for the contract right now, but it's a little troubling, the idea that we, well, let me go back a little bit. There's a proposal tonight to make recycling in ordinance to make it against a lot of not recycling. I think that too is an excellent idea. But what troubles me is that we recycle, which is a good thing, yet we take in 100,000 tons of waste from other jurisdictions. And I understand that the dilemma there that we need to do that for fiscal reasons. But I guess I'm just kind of thinking aloud that, do we have any restrictions on these other jurisdictions recycling programs? Like, do we have anything in the contract that says, if we take your trash, this 100,000 tons of trash, we want to make sure it's clean trash or trash that's, all the recycled items are out of? And if we don't have that, is that something that we could consider in this contract to say, we'll take your garbage, but we want it, we want you folks to have the same ordinance that we have here in Superior to, because this, I mean, this is eventually going to fill up, you know, over the course of our lifetimes. And then, and then what do we do? We put a barge in the bay and start piling it on that like they do in New York? You know, so do you understand where we're going with this? And is that, is that out of the question right now? Or is that something that we can maybe consider soon?
Do you have any?
I can try and answer that. Councillor Merzick, to answer your question specifically about the contract, there is no provision that I recall in there that, you know, states that the WLSSD must enforce recycling to some standard we do. But they do have an extensive recycling program in their district and in fact, they have actually tried to work, and they do work with the city to try to encourage our educational outreach and our recycling program here. So I know that they do look on their transfer floor every day, they have someone there who does limit what recyclables come out, cardboard, plastic, any of that stuff. And it's very minimal what we get already.
I'm assuming that we charge by the, is it by the ton or by the?
By the ton, correct.
And so it's in their best interest to minimize the amount of garbage they're selling to us.
Absolutely. And they've got the same ordinance, I think, in their sanitary district boundaries that they have a mandatory recycling program. There's curbside recycling throughout the whole geographical area.
And without, if they decided not to give this contract, if they decided not to dump their waste here, what other options do they have? Or are we, do we kind of hold a monopoly on the garbage business here in Superior?
Not exactly. There were competing sanitary landfills for, competing for the disposal contract in this case. I think we had what, three or four?
Yeah, I think there were the landfill in Sirona, the landfill in Elk River. And so that's always a challenge for us when we're trying to determine what will we, what will we propose for that tipping fee? Because we know we need to cover our costs and we need to be positioned well for ourselves. But we also know we can't just say we want $30 a ton and then add in the state fees on top of that and expect them to just say, okay, it's just over in Superior, we'll just come over to you. Because, I mean, they run all the numbers of how much does it cost them to run their trucks down to Sirona, run the trucks to Elk River. And so certainly, some of the other companies that we were bidding against, they may very well have had a lower tipping fee, but they have higher transportation costs. And so, you know, it's kind of a fine line when we submit our proposal. We don't want to be too high and we certainly don't want to be too low.
I can speak to the recyclable materials to a certain degree. You'll notice in the proposed contract, in section one, the definitions section, that we give a considerable amount of ink to, on page three, to what consists of unacceptable waste. And unacceptable waste, under the terms of the contract, include recyclable materials identified in the board's solid waste ordinance. Now, you don't have the benefit admittedly of the board's solid waste ordinance as an attachment to this proposed agreement. But as I recall, that, their ordinance is just as aggressive, if not more so, as a typical municipal recycling ordinance in terms of identifying the sorts of materials that they expect not to be handling as waste, but through a recycling program. And I recall, Mr. Getzmann, I think you would as well, that we observed some downward trends in tonnage throughout the contract period that's ending this summer. And we've queried about that mostly out of curiosity with the district. And they attribute part of that trend to more aggressive recycling protocols. So recycling is addressed in here.
Councillor McKenzie?
Yeah, a lot of Griggs' concerns are mine as well. I think a big thing, and Jean, I think I've talked with you before and about the lifespan of our landfill, I do believe that it's only 15 to 20 years. And I guess I would ask, would that include, you know, cells 1, 2, 5 as the lifespan?
Yeah.
And of course, and of course, you know, having WLSSD bringing garbage there might even make it even less. But again, I think the big thing, I think here too, you know, I understand everything that you're saying, but I think a big part of this should also be recycling. You know, the mandatory recycling that we have here in the state of Wisconsin, we changed over to a system, costs quite a bit of money for these new carts that everybody says are user-friendly. And I really think that we need to start a program, and Tom Bridge and I are bringing this forward, to make this, I guess to educate the people as to mandatory recycling. And we're not, certainly not trying to say that we're going to, we're going to find everybody, but we want everybody to understand the importance. Because what we're talking about here tonight is very, very important to our environment and Lake Superior. And if we've only got a 15 to 20-year lifespan, that's a drop in the bucket. Some people might say, let's just dig another hole. And I don't think that's the answer, that's not the answer, even if we did have the space because we're right next to the lake, so.
If we, if we continue on for an eight-year contract with roughly 100,000 tons coming in from the district, plus the other that I mentioned from residents and other haulers that bring waste, at the end of the mid-year 2019, we're estimating that there would be about three and a half years left if we continued on with another contract past that point in time. If at that point, the council said, we're not taking any waste other than just for our residents, the 10,000 tons, it's estimated that we would have a life of about 40 years. If we just did residents and, like Nordic and the businesses that they're hauling for, we're estimating, I think it was 11 years. So there's a huge difference between whether we have the district contract or not and how fast the landfill will fill up. That's very, very true.
Thank you, thanks Jean.
Councillor Bridge?
A couple notes on the recycling, you know, on the other side of the bridge. The biggest difference, I think, well, somebody needs to turn my volume down if they can hear me. Don't, and the WLSSD area have an incentive to recycle in that they pay for the garbage and the less garbage that gets hauled from their homes, the less pickups they have, the less money they pay to haul the garbage away. So, and their recycling rates are significantly higher than ours are. For the recycling, the properties there are assessed $18 a year that they pay on their tax bill. So they don't really see that. But that's why it works better over there than it does here, is because there's an incentive and that's what we need to try and create here.
Councillor Herrick?
Yeah, just two questions. One on these cells that are filled, are we, we're producing that gas, is that correct? And if we are, are we selling that gas? And is that, I mean, is that, is what revenues are coming from that as far as helping this fund out or, that's one question, I have another one after that.
Okay. Yeah, to answer that, yes, all the decomposing trash is producing methane. And we have, as of the last capping project in 2008, I believe, we added a bunch of underground piping that goes through that waste and collects quite a bit of that methane out of the trash, out of the fill. And we do burn it in a flare right now. And the only stream revenue we have at this point is the carbon offset credits that come from that conversion. So we burn methane, we create carbon dioxide and water. It's less harmful to the environment and we registered that project on the Climate Action Reserve. And we actually have sold credits from part of 2009 and we're verifying 2010s right now. But we've got a buyer for those credits, for the city's credits for the next five years and that contract is going to net us about $500,000 to $600,000 in total, just for the carbon offset credits. Now, that gas could be, we could look at things like turning a turbine out there, you know, making power, selling power. Those are all, based on the gas volume we have now, I'm told that's a viable option as well. So that would be another stream of revenue we had available to us. Of course, it does take some investment to get there and so that's, that's something we could look at.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, as far as construction waste, we don't accept that out there, is that correct? Because I know, you know, if you live here in Superior, you have to bring it out to chemists. And hopefully the same for when these other people from Minnesota, is that the same rules?
Correct. We do receive small amounts that are mixed in with, you know, dumpsters and things that come to us, but generally, you know, full loads of demolition, we don't take, right?
Okay, thanks.
Is there any, oh, councillor Hendry?
Yeah, I was wondering if you go over the issue of hazardous waste. I wonder, do we take, I know it's collected at different places at different times, do we take any in in our dump or how is that handled?
Generally, we don't take hazardous waste. We can take it in small amounts, you know, if you have leftover cans of, you know, spray paint or something at your house. Obviously, we take that stuff into the landfill. And we do have a process for approving any waste that we do take under our, the permit I referred to with the DNR. There's a process in place where we have the generator fill out of form, we have a chemical composition test done, that kind of stuff. But generally, we don't, we don't take large volumes of hazardous waste, no.
Or does it wind up a lot of different places in the country then?
There are special, special landfills that will take that kind of stuff, large amounts of chemical and things, yeah.
We're not taking it in from other communities then either, or, okay.
Councillor McDonald?
I would just like to thank city attorney Prowl for explaining the contract about the recycling. People watching don't have the opportunity to read it like we do. And you can go online, but then you have to read through the whole contract. So I appreciate you bringing that out because then the people watching will understand we are looking into recycling, or the much as we can. Thank you.
Oh, councillor Merzick?
Just one more thing, the carbon credits, who are, who are we selling those to?
It's a, it's a company called DTE Carbon. It's a kind of an offshoot of DTE Energy over in Detroit.
So they're in the business of polluting, essentially?
Well, yeah, I guess you could look at it that way, but they have, they have a whole other division that buys and sells these kind of offsets, whether it's for their projects or other needs.
I guess, the reason I kind of joke about that, it's really not a joking matter, but I think what Herrick brought up is a really good idea, that we need to figure out a way, instead of selling these carbon credits, because, I mean, if you look at like the globe, it doesn't matter if we're, if we don't pollute, but we sell our ability to pollute to somebody else, it's still polluting. So if we can, how aggressively are we trying to figure out a way to harness this methane and use it as, like you said, for power production or whatever? I mean, can we, I know I've asked this before and the answer I get is, we're just burning it right now. But can we get something in the works to aggressively move towards selling this stuff? Or is that gonna, I'm assuming it's going to cost some money, right?
Absolutely.
But there's got to be some federal money available right now for that sort of thing.
Yeah, we have done some preliminary looking around and at various times, there has been some, some grants or reduced bonding and stuff like that, but we've not spent a lot of time exploring different grant opportunities for those kinds of products. But the installation of the gas collection system and the flare really only got to a point where it was operational and working like it should, you know, about a year ago in early 2009. And so at this point, that, the carbon offset credits, that's like a free source of revenue and we can sell those whether we make power or not. But just by voluntarily putting that system in, basically before the federal law required us to put that in there and convert it from methane over to carbon dioxide, we can have the ability then to sell those credits.
Yeah.
But absolutely, yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I think that'd be a great opportunity.
Do you understand the dilemma though? We have to take in waste because we have to have the money, yet on the downside, we're taking in waste. And then we have to burn this methane and we get to sell the credits, yet somebody else gets to pollute because we don't. So I think if we, we need to spend a little more time on figuring out how we can balance that.
Do we have any other further questions? Not, any more comments? Not a motion would be in order? Motion's been made and seconded to approve this contract. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 7.4, assistant public works director Getzmann is requesting authorization to sell excess and obsolete fleet vehicles and equipment.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? Mr. Herrick?
Yeah, Jeff, I hate to bring you up again, but what vehicles are we looking at selling this time?
We don't actually have a list prepared yet, but what we do generally every year is Len has come, our fleet manager has come forward like this and asked permission to bring you a list as we develop it. And we try to move pieces out of the fleet during the year, we'll bring that back as we do it. So you'd see a letter coming to you that said we have a piece ready to go to auction when we have it ready. So we have, we have a list of equipment, we think we're going to purchase this here, but we've not formalized that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bender?
Hey Jeff, stay up there, I have another, I have a question. No, are all of these vehicles, in the point that they need to be sold? I guess my question should be, how many hours would there be on one of these obsolete vehicles? How many hours of use?
Well, that really depends on the piece of equipment. And I guess we rely on our fleet manager for that, for maintenance records, maintenance history, you know, what we're putting into it for cost of repair. But generally, a large piece of equipment, I think, go around 12,000 hours and eight to 10 years in life before we start looking at replacement. So- So, so what we're looking at here, it could be anything from a bulldozer to a passenger van that we'd be looking to trade out. And, and the other thing that he does generally is move a piece of equipment from one use to another, like, let's say the library, we may take a van out of the travel fleet and move it to the library, put it in service at the library for a remainder of years, and sell the, the bottom of the heap, basically, that kind of thing. So we try to get the most use we can before we have to, you know, send one down the road.
Concern has been expressed to me before. Maybe these were being sold before they'd had the correct amount of hours on them, but I just wanted to check. Thank you.
I've got nothing, I just wanted to come back up. No, 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 really. It seems like that we have had a lot of excess or obsolete vehicles, and I know that probably a lot of it's determined because of age, but I'm hearing a lot of times from mechanics and things that, you know, I remember you mentioned something about 12,000 hours, but I've seen as low as 5,500 hours on vehicles that are considered obsolete, but, you know, I would think that maybe they're, they're still functional, or still could be used. And again, we've got, you know, really good mechanics that I think they could keep these things running, as opposed to buying brand-new at some point.
Yeah, there again, I guess I'm relying on their expertise over there to, you know, make the assessment on what we're, what the best option for us is. You know, it may not be just a matter of purely ours, it may be, you know, something has gone really bad, we may have bad transmissions or major parts that we keep putting a lot of money in, and at that number of hours, it doesn't make sense to keep at it, so.
So what, when are you gonna have this list? I mean, we're voting on this tonight, but you don't have a list, so when are you gonna have a list?
Generally, every year about this time, Len has sent this same kind of proposal through to council, just, it's just to follow ordinance and to dispose equipment on an auction as, as we need to do that during the year, and we bring that back when we do it. So as, as we purchase new equipment during the year, and we get down to a point where there's something to dispose of, we would bring that back to you at that time, the specific piece.
So, so will you be checking then to make sure that there, that there's not this low hours on these things just because they're old and factor all that in?
Yeah, yeah, we don't just buy a new equipment just to buy it, I mean, there's a, there's a need to, when we do it, yeah.
Better stay up there, just in case somebody else asks another question.
I see no further questions, a motion would be in order? Do we have a motion? Have a motion seconded, and all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 7.5, Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan is requesting the reestablishment of the Blue Star Memorial sign along Highway 2 and 53 Quarter between Harborview Park and the Bong Veterans Historical Center, and requesting approval for the Parks and Recreation Division to pay $1,000 toward the sign, and city crews to install it upon arrival.
Is motion made in seconded? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by City Attorney Purrell amending the traffic code by removing alternate side parking provision from snow emergency section and recreating it in section 11251G.
Motion's made in seconded, is there further discussion or comment? Not, yes, Mr. McKenzie?
Frog, when I read through this, I saw where this person who challenged this actually lost in court. And I'm sure you're probably just gonna say that's, you know, you're just, you need to cover bases, but is that what it is, is just to clarify, to clarify this ordinance?
Yeah, the purpose here is to make clear to anyone who should catch themselves reviewing the traffic code, that the city of Superior is in the business of enforcing calendar parking year-round. Yes?
So what, what was the gray area for this particular person? Were they?
His frustration primarily, from what I could tell, was that the calendar parking was included in a portion of the code that was titled "snow emergencies." And one of the arguments, as I recall, was, if you don't have the declaration of a snow emergency, you don't have the need to enforce calendar parking. But as you know, from, from your experience living here, and of course, being a counselor here, calendar parking is a phenomenon that is enforced year-round, that's nothing new. The enforcement protocol is not gonna change. I'm, I just think this approach to the ordinance makes it more clear than it was that calendar parking is a year-round obligation.
So, so then you don't, you don't see a, well, you never know, but the possibility of, of this confusion is, is quite a bit less now because of the way it's worded?
I think, I think it was hard to be confused by the ordinance when I read it, when I read it, in all the years that it was as it was before now, and now it's even more clear. If I've lost you, I'm already 0 for 1, so maybe this is, this is a bad game.
No, I was just, I was just gonna say, I got, I got it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's passed.
We have a few people signed up.
We have three people signed up to speak, and Counselor Bender, I'd like to have the other two people speak before you, if that's okay with you. So we have Mr. Franks signed up to speak, would you, three minutes, please?
After I presented the board...
Will you state your name and?
Yeah, David Franks, I live at 1605 East 7th Street here in Superior. I was here during our last meeting. After I presented this board, my concerns about energy conservations, or energy conservation by regulating government building temperature and the abuse of city vehicles. Some members of the board and department had circled the wagons and deflected my concerns by stating, "The use of city vehicles was allowed for personal slash incidental use for lunch breaks or workouts at the YMCA during lunch breaks, leading by example in the fight towards reducing obesity and fat that plague the general public. On February the 8th, myself and my wife went to the Arby's for breakfast and observed a city of Superior vehicle parked in the parking lot. I took pictures of that vehicle. We departed at 9:45, and the vehicle was still in the parking lot. That afternoon, I spoke my concern, concerns with Jeff Getzman. This individual is a contractor that has this vehicle, not a public employee. He has a five-year contract, airport management services dated January 14, 2008. The contractor doesn't state, or the contract, sorry, right here, does not state anything about providing this contractor, or the contractor with a city vehicle, which happens to be baby blue Dodge with the Wisconsin Municipal License Plate, number 31339. It's being used for his personal use, gain, excuse me, and is also parked at his residence." I have pictures of that as well. I also mentioned concerns about hangars, aircraft hangars owned and listed in the public record as private property and not real estate. February 10th, approximately 8:40, I was driving down by the high school, and I followed city pickup number 608 from the high school area that went over by Bolowski Dental Clinic. I contacted the acting mayor, he stated the individual could have been doing an inspection or something of that nature. I waited. I observed the individual leaving the dental clinic at approximately 10 o'clock. He departed in a city truck number 608. I again called the acting mayor. Although I know you don't intend it, a deflection during the last council meeting indicated an improvement over actions by those in the past justifying the ongoing conduct of those in the present. These actions, I believe, violate city policy and fall under fraud, waste, and abuse, not incidental use. Who's in control of our vehicles owned by the city, and what repercussions could we face from federal and state code violations? Thank you very much.
Have another person sign up to speak. Marty Curtis, you were signed up for 6.5, but it was not separated during the consent agenda. Do you wish to speak to that issue now?
No, I don't wish to speak to the political report.
All right, thank you. Then we'll call on Counselor Bender.
Warren Bender, I live at 2428 Ogden. I'm speaking as a private citizen, and I know I only have three minutes, and I've already timed this, so it won't take nearly that long. But before the meeting tonight, I had wanted to present a resolution, but we didn't have enough time to meet the 24-hour open meeting law deadline on that. And the Eau Claire City Council has already passed, they held a special meeting, and they passed a resolution about this. Briefly stating this, I'm against Governor Walker's budget balancing ploy of taking away collective bargaining from state employees. If this starts at the state level, it will trickle down, and eventually, besides going to the local level, it'll also go into the private sector. And it was our fathers and our grandfathers, and also our mothers and grandmothers that fought hard to have the right to collectively bargain contracts. Those rights have brought us many good things, including safety in the workplace, 40-hour work week, health insurance, vacation time, sick leave, retirement programs, just to name a few of those. And the last thing that I will say besides, thank you, which I'll say at the end, is this is no way to treat the citizens of Wisconsin, Governor Walker. Thank you.
Counselor Merzick?
Thanks, Warren. This is just a crazy thing that's happening. I'd like to point out a few things. I recently read a statistic that 90% of the population in our country has a monopoly, excuse me, 90%, 90% of the money in our country is held by 10% of the population. So I'm gonna say that one more time to make sure everybody got it right. 90% of, of the money in our country is held by 10% of the population. And I think that's a conservative numbers. And every time we, the state or the federal government gets into a fiscal dilemma, it seems that the working class, which is in that 90%, has to shoulder the burden. And I think that, that this is unacceptable, and I think, it's my assessment that, that this, this behavior, this attack on unions, it's not just an attack on public employees, this is an attack on, on private employees as well. And hopefully, it's gonna be voted on tomorrow, and I'm hoping that it's not gonna pass. So I guess we'll see what happens. And I just also want the unions to know, both public and private, that they have my full support in, in this fight. In fact, I attended the protest today outside of the Government Center, and that was a very positive thing. I think over 400 people showed up. So this, and I'd like to say one more thing. I think these politicians at the state and federal level are so out of touch with the working class, they don't realize that, that these public employees, they take their lunch at Arby's, for example, or they take their lunch, and they spend their, their wages at these local businesses. And so there's, it's, there's a, there's a large amount of money that goes back in to the public sector that, that really fuels our economy. So if we start stripping benefits and wages and taking away these crucially important union rights, it's gonna have a ripple effect into our entire community.
Motion to adjourn would be in order? Motion made in second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Aye.